I'd like to call the June 25, 2019 Planning Board meeting to order. Would you please rise and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for our regular viewing audience, who are wondering why the vice chair is chairing and the chair is taking notes, Gail LeBlanc is out this evening, so Barber is filling in doing secretarial work, so I will be running the meeting. Okay, item one. Charles F. and Kathleen Martin with John C. Parmicato requesting a lot line adjustment slash subdivision, a public hearing on a lot line adjustment at 37 slash 45 Heath Street on the boundary between lots map four, block six, lots two, sorry, blocks three, and 3-12. Also, Charles F. and Kathleen Martin request a two-lot subdivision of the remainder of map four, block six, block three. Mr. Quintal, I believe you are presenting.
I am, thank you very much. Mr. Martin was unable to be here, but I'm the engineer on the project, Dennis Quintal, and we provided a title sheet, a list of abutters. And we have really two pieces of property that we're talking about tonight. There's one lot over here, lot 3-12, which is that piece there, which is 2.8 acres. That's owned by John Parmicato. And then the remaining land for the Martins is the rest of this green area here, which is approximately 12.8 acres. And that's the remaining land from a number of subdivisions we've been doing on this property along Heath Street. So the wetlands were mapped, the topographic survey was done, we're showing contour lines, high intensity soil map was done. And so the reason we're here tonight is to, first of all, do a lot line adjustment. We'll be removing this lot line, which is in blue dashed here, and creating this line here in orange, so that the Parmicato would own this whole parcel here, which will wind up being around 12.8 acres. And then the remaining land of Martin would be this area here. And within that area there, we're subdividing that into two lots. Test pits were done today. We show a 4,000 square foot area for leach field. We're showing proposed house location. We're showing a well, a protective zone around the well. And we also had provided-- This is a copy of the subdivision plan for recording purposes, which really only shows the property lines and the wetlands, because they don't like to have much more than that shown for recording purposes. The rate of speed of these is pretty particular about how the plans for recording are done. And this sheet here shows the calculations for lot size based on soil type for these two lots. And so each lot has more than one value of lot based on the percentages of soil types that are on each lot. And we also provide a driveway plan that shows the site distance along the street to verify that people coming out of the new driveways that we're doing have enough site distance in either direction. And so that basically sums up what we're trying to do tonight. And so with that, I can answer any particular questions that you have. We did ask for a couple of waivers. One was on the application fee of reducing $2,000 to $1,000 on the review fee. And the other waiver was for requiring a stormwater management plan where it's just two lots, and there's only going to be a driveway in a single-family house. It didn't make any sense to really do a stormwater management plan, because it's plenty of upland on each site, and we're not building a road, so there's no culverts, no stormwater detention areas. And so we're asking for a waiver from that subdivision requirement of providing a stormwater management plan. And so with that, I guess I can answer any questions.
Okay, to me, I think we need to break this down into basically four steps. One is the waiver on fees should be discussed first. Second would be the lot line adjustment, then the subdivision and stormwater management.
I'd like to hold off on discussing the waiver of fees until we progress in. If they're asking for something from us, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the project.
No problem. I just, I think, to keep things clean, we need to separate the lot line adjustment from the--
Right, I think the first thing would be lot line adjustment, right?
Right.
Yeah, so technically, a lot line adjustment that creates no new buildable lots actually doesn't even require a public hearing.
Right.
Obviously, we've noticed this--
But because it all came in on one application.
It should be its own separate motion for the lot line adjustment. It can have the same recording plan if the subdivision is also--
So I have a question, if I may. Just current conditions. We have lot 3-12 and then everything else. So tell me, explain, if you want to do the lot line adjustment first, just the lot line adjustment, what are you going to end up with?
This line that's in blue dash would be removed.
Okay.
This line here would be created, which would be the back lot of these two lots.
Okay, so we still end up with two lots?
Still--
That is a lot--
We're still with two lots. We had the plan reviewed by the assessor, and the assessor gave this lot a separate number, tax map number three, as remaining land number three, and gave the number three, tax map number 37 and 38. However, remaining land three is actually going to be part of 3-12. So I'll talk to the assessor about that, because she might change her mind about how the tax map numbers are. But that usually happens, usually after the approval anyways.
But does she want to--
This is not a separate lot. It's not a separate lot. It's just changing the ownership from this, the Martins, to this and the Parmicatos.
But from the assessor's point of view, does she want to keep that separate because it's a different zone than the other piece?
I don't believe so.
Because, yeah, because right now--
Yeah, I think so.
The existing thing is in two zones. Exactly.
Yes, it's not a problem if it has two zones. It has to abide by the regulations where you would want to put the dwelling--
Yeah, because the lot now, still--
But it doesn't make sense to have a separate tax map number on an area like this that's not subdivided. It's going to be part of this lot.
Right.
So again, I can go over that with the assessor, and the final my law will have the correct numbers according to the town, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, because otherwise, then, and that would not have any road access either.
Oh, no, 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 it's not intended to.
Right.
So one other question with that, particularly keeping it kind of-- If your client--
Martins.
If the only thing they got tonight was the lot line adjustment, will they go forward with it?
Certainly.
Okay.
Because they still have this land remaining as the subdivision.
I'm trying to break it down in my mind.
Yep, yep, that's no problem. Yep, that's what we're here for, to make it clear. Yep, no problem.
Sandy?
So mine's kind of a taxation question also, because in here, they said something about the current use. So to me, that whole piece is in current use now, correct, as a wood lot. So to me, if now he's taking it out of that, because he's going to use it as building lots, so I believe that the tax should be paid now. And then, if it still is, the new person would like it as a building lot or a wood lot, and the acreage and everything is what it should be, then they could apply for that also. But in my mind, I think he's taking it out of one thing and making it into something else.
Well, I believe transfer of ownership requires it to come out of current use.
Right. Well, that's what in here it says, maybe not, so that's why I'm making sure.
Assessing usually takes care of that change.
Yeah, the tax component is not something that's under the planning board's purview either.
It's typically the selectmen and the assessor that work on that, so--
Right. Well, I just, when I was reading that, in my mind, that's what I'm like, well, it's coming out of current use, because it's not a wood lot anymore. It's a building lot, so.
No, actually, it's coming out of current use, because the material that's down actually on Heath Street is not large enough to ever go back into current use. But in order to do the lot line adjustment, it has to come out of current use, adjust, because now it belongs to somebody else.
Right.
And they have to apply for a current use status. You know, that's not, it's not a given--
Right, that's how I read it.
Just a point of correction is that land ownership changing, changes, does not pull land out of current use.
Excuse me?
Just because land changes ownership, that does not pull it out of current use. Having--
It always used to under statute.
No, having, I have personal experience with that multiple times, and it does not take it out of current use. If the--
They don't change the use.
--land itself changes use, either by being reduced in size, then it will--
I was just going to say, if they were selling the entire parcel, if the lot line adjustment was all the way over to Heath Street--
Yeah.
--then it wouldn't come out of current use. But because it's now being, it's coming out and it's changing the dimensions of the parcel in current use, it has to come out of current use.
Yes, yeah, if it goes below the 10 acres.
Yeah, it's one of those weird idiosyncrasies of the current use law.
But I guess that isn't for us to--
So, that, the back land of lot three, how big is that?
10 acres.
It's just 10 acres?
10.03.
That was all the way up to the existing boundary line? Okay.
Yeah.
So that you just, that is 10 acres, okay, so that can stay in current use.
Well, it can go back into current use.
So the lot 12, as you can see right here, existing is 2.8 acres, proposed 12.83. So 10.03 acres.
Okay.
That's being transferred.
And it's a minimum of 10 acres for current use, plus one for the house.
Now, the abutters to the back, I know one of them is the town of Newton.
Right.
And then, how, I was trying to get this in the bigger thing, how close is this to the fish and game land?
Fish and game land is down near the railroad tracks.
Uh-huh.
And you can see here, this is where the property is, up in this, more toward halfway between 108 and the railroad tracks. Okay? So fish and game is closer to the railroad tracks.
I know that's a--
Doesn't abut the--
Substantial piece, okay.
So there's an existing house on lot 12?
That's correct.
We can, can assume it's going to stay there.
Pretty sure.
I mean, there's no indication that anything's happening to it.
Exactly, yeah, there's no-- Excuse me? You'd have to come up here and please identify yourself for the record.
So John Parmicato at 45 Heath Street, I think, identified on lot 12, yes. Yeah, I think the question was whether my house was going anywhere. It's staying there, it's going, I like it there, so. My intention was just to have some more wooded area. As you can probably tell, it's landlocked on two areas, town of Newton, the Redlands, I think, fish and game, eventually the three, my three neighbors, and eventually probably the two lots, so. But just want to make an L and have 12 acres, that's all my, that's really all I want. So, yeah, I enjoyed being there, and we have a kind of a narrow area anyways, the way the dual-axis driveway comes in, so. Any other questions for me, I could answer those.
Ever since we have the luxury of having you here, it sounds like you're looking for just the back land, and that's always, I like that idea. A couple of things, this land will be there a lot longer than we're here on this planet. Would you have any desire to do a deed restriction or conservation easement or something like that?
Maybe in future, I don't know. Yeah, for that, possibly, yeah. I mean, it's, I think access would be a problem, because of who's-- I mean, the town does abut it, so I'm possibly, I don't know what's on that side of it, but yeah, possibly. I intend on staying at 45 for a long period of time, so. Can't speak to that right now, but maybe in the--
I just bring up these suggestions, because I know that there's a couple of things you're asking from us to waive, so I--
Yeah, I--
Have the discussion going.
Not sure. It's probably a little too soon to come to that conclusion. I want to keep it as is, that's my intention.
Any further questions from board members? Say what you want, Paul.
I will, definitely. Thank you.
Okay, we're still on the lot line adjustment. Are there any abutters who wish to make comments regarding the lot line adjustment?
Jen has a question.
No, not a question.
Jim Summers, a lot, I mean, I don't even remember what lot I am, 41 Heath Street, yeah, right there. The only question I had was, with the lot line adjustment going to the right there, who would own and who would have control of this remaining lot three here?
Mr. Parmicato.
Okay, so even though there's a lot line adjustment going here?
That's not a lot line, that's a zone line.
Oh, zone anyways, I didn't have all, I didn't have all--
Right.
All right, thank you.
You still need to accept jurisdiction, which I do think the application is complete for both a lot line adjustment and a subdivision, but since we're doing the lot line, it is complete for a lot line adjustment.
Can I have a motion to accept jurisdiction?
So moves.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on taking jurisdiction? Hearing none, all those in favor?
All right.
That's unanimous. Okay, any further discussion on the lot line adjustment?
You haven't said anything yet.
Well, I can make comments about the lot line adjustment. You're creating a single lot, the dimensions are changing. It wouldn't, in the future, become more buildable, because of the frontage and the access, so that's just a simple lot line adjustment, other than standard conditions, it seems appropriate to approve. For the subdivision application component of it, they are asking for a stormwater waiver from your existing stormwater regulations, not the ones we've been working on the past couple of months, which seems appropriate, given the topography of this lot. It's not creating any new roads, it's going to--
You want to hold off on that? We're just doing, I'm looking now for--
I'm only saying this because--
You can say it all over again.
No, because the application asks for waivers from all of this as a package, so I'm just saying it all for now, for consideration. That waiver seems appropriate, you don't need it for the lot line adjustment. But because of the waiver for the fee actually applies to both applications--
Exactly.
--you should consider that before any approval of the lot line adjustments. It's a complete application, but they asked for the fees to be reduced. You should address that before you do the lot line adjustment approval.
But we don't have a fee for that. Well, yes, there probably should have been two separate things to start with, right? First, do--
It's not unusual to have a lot line adjustment and subdivision together.
Yeah.
But now we've got to talk about fees before we approve the other thing.
Right.
But really, the fee is related to the subdivision, not to the, there wouldn't be a fee for--
There is a fee for lot line adjustment, I believe. I'll have my book in front of me. You do.
Is that where you're saying, required by code, is that something that is standard practice?
To reduce the fee?
To discuss the--
When you have an application--
Subdivision.
--if you submit a waiver, but you didn't submit the information required of it, stormwater regulation being one of them-- They submitted the waiver request, so it's a complete application.
That's a subdivision, but I don't see--
If you, you need to take, you've accepted jurisdiction, you now should take up the waiver requests.
Yeah.
But because the lot line adjustment doesn't really deal with the stormwater, but it does deal with the fee, I would at least do that one first, even if you don't want to do the stormwater until you do the subdivision.
I'm inclined to grant fee reductions based on what the client is willing to do for the town, as in making the subdivisions as close to what the master plan is asking for. And that's why I tend to not want to discuss fee reductions until we discuss other aspects of the plan.
But that's not a fee, that's an escrow for charges.
It's an application fee and a NIPRA.
Right, and what he's asking for is a reduction of the NIPRA amount.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, he's not asking for a reduction in the application--
He's not asking for a reduction in the amount of money it's going to cost him. He's asking for a reduction in the amount of a deposit that we would hold. And if we don't grant the reduction, then instead of getting the money this week, he gets the money when the project ends. But he still gets his money back, anything that isn't spent.
Yeah, because he's requesting it from the review part--
Right.
--not from the application fee part.
Right.
The applicant is offering to pay the full application fee, he simply does not want to have to put in $2,000 into a NIPRA account--
Right. That isn't going to require that much money.
Exactly. So we can take that one first, and that is the request to reduce the, a waiver to reduce the amount to be deposited into the NIPRA account.
Okay, I'll move that we reduce the, we grant the waiver requesting the reduction in the amount of deposit he needs for the NIPRA account.
To what amount?
To $1,000 that he has requested.
Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Discussion.
I've already said my piece.
Well, he's paying the full application fee--
Oh, I understand that, yeah, I understand.
The NIPRA account is not money that, it's money that he submits, we pay what needs to be paid, and then he gets everything back, so it's--
Yes.
He's just asking not to give us more money than we really need upfront, so the waiver is more pro forma, because of the rate things are going, he'll be getting everything back.
Yeah, my view on these is, until we've fully discussed the subdivision, we don't know all the potential costs that might come up for the--
But trust me, if it goes over $1,000, he will have to put up the rest of the money.
And that's clear in the letter, and it's clear in all the rule, I don't think that's--
And it's one of those, if you think you're going to stick the town of Newton with a bill, no, what's going to happen is your plan will be rescinded and not recorded, and then you'll have wasted an awful lot of money for not, because you'll have to start over at square one.
One of the standard conditions of any approval is that all fees be paid to the town of Newton, be it be an engineering review fee, a wetland scientist that may have had to go out on behalf of the town. That fee would have to be paid before you can receive final approval, which is signature from the planning board, even if your escrow account is not the $2,000, and it's only $1,000.
Right. You look puzzled.
Well, are these two things separate, these two sentences, or are they the same thing? Application, kind of, subdivision review fee, three or fewer lots, $2,000.
The subdivision review fee is the engineer's way of what we call the NIPRA.
Okay. So that's only one thing.
Right, that's that escrow account that the town maintains. He'll be charged for the postage for the abutter notices, the, if we needed to have the town engineer go out and review the site, that would be, come out of the NIPRA account. What he's simply saying is that he believes that $1,000 will cover the two-lot subdivision.
Okay.
He's paying the application full, the application fee in full.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
What's the motion again?
You need a motion if you want to do the lot line adjustment.
There was a motion.
Well, this is a motion for--
I'm sorry, the waiver.
You've got to do the waiver first.
Yeah.
Right, that's what we're doing.
Roger made the motion to waive the fee down to--
To reduce it to $1,000.
Mr. White seconded.
And Mr. White seconded. So all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, next we'll go to the lot line adjustment. So I need a motion to hopefully approve the lot line adjustment between 45 and 33.
Do we need to do like conditions that they set all the markers and all that? That has to be in the motion, right?
Exactly. I'm looking for a motion to approve the lot line adjustment between map four, block six, lots three, and 3-12, and then any conditions. I know I usually am the person that writes down all the conditions for--
Right.
We've got to do our own writing today?
There are some, there are some standard conditions that we always go, that the, you know, new bounds are set, that the--
Pages are recorded and all that.
Yeah, that all local and state fees be paid.
Any necessary permits?
Excuse me?
Any necessary federal, state, or local permits? Not that I think this needs any, but--
Be received. That's actually already on the template that I made.
Any other conditions we need?
I honestly can't think of any, because it's back land.
Right. I'll make the motion with those, with those conditions.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sandy seconded. Any further discussion on the lot line adjustment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
All right.
That's unanimous. Next item to take up is the--
Do we have to take jurisdiction on the subdivision?
I would, altogether, right? You could take a separate jurisdiction.
It all came in under one application.
Okay, I guess my question was, the vote for the jurisdiction, did it cover both?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
So now we will discuss the request, the application of Charles and Kathleen Martin for the two-lot subdivision of the remainder of map four, block six, lot three, which will now be lot 3-7 and 3-8, which have frontage on Heath Street.
So once again, the one waiver request being your stormwater regulations, your existing stormwater regulations. The lots drain away from the roads, so it's not, wouldn't be contributing to the roads' stormwater, so the town wouldn't be accepting responsibility under MS4 permit compliance. Under your proposed stormwater regulations, these two lots actually wouldn't even be subject, because they're not creating any new infrastructure.
Correct.
So, for that, just for consideration, so it seems like a reasonable waiver request.
Mr. Quintal, do you have anything you'd like to add regarding the subdivision?
No, I just think that it wouldn't. I mean, when we do a stormwater management--
I mean, when, when we do a stormwater management plan, it typically involves detention areas and runoff calculations to retain runoff from the site. The driveways and the building areas are small relative to the upland soils on each site. So the impact to, of, for runoff from those sites is, is, is basically next to nothing because they're, because of the building setback requirements, they're not even gonna be near the wetlands. So there's really no impacts, so...
And you say it all drains away from the road?
Exactly.
That's correct, yeah.
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. White, thank you. Any further discussion on the waiver? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. So the last item is the, um, two lot subdivision itself. Are there any further board questions?
Well, I just have one where it's a scenic road. I didn't know if the conservation, we had the meeting, we were gonna go look at it, but I don't think we sent in any written thing to the board.
I didn't see any.
But are there any stone walls or anything in the front of that?
I, I'm not sure, to tell you the truth, but I recall at the last, when we did one of the last subdivisions there, one of the conditions was to meet with the conservation and evaluate where the driveways were. And if we had to move them one way or another to save a tree, I mean, we certainly can do that. And I, I think that that's what we did before. So obviously, you know, we'd like to maintain the character of the road. But the other thing is, we gotta be careful of, is the site distance for people coming out of the driveways. And where those, some of those trees are fairly close to the street, we have to be careful that we maintain site distance. So that's the only factor that we can come into, into play. But obviously, when we try to do stuff like that, we try to work within the trees that are, you got 150 feet of lot, or more of driveway, so it's pretty easy to find a place to go without impacting the trees. Cutting the trees are an expense, and, and most people don't cut them any, any, for any reason, you know, unless they have to.
As I've said to every developer, please leave as many trees as you can.
Say something. On sheet four, there's a note that says there are no stone walls or trees within the area shown as proposed driveway.
Oh, yay!
So I'm glad that the owner's intent is to not cut, you know, it's a scenic road, and the town is designated that, and I've noticed other new construction out there where it's lawn right up to the road. And so it sounds like this is exactly what the, the applicant is saying. So I would like to have a, a condition put on this that other than what's needed for the driveway and sight lines, that a 50-foot buffer is left as a no-cut zone for five years.
That will be difficult to enforce, just, it can legally be, certainly be a condition. It will be difficult to enforce.
I'd like that as a condition on the subdivision. Do we have any abutters here that, or people who live on that?
Excuse, excuse me. The board discusses it first, and then we will open it to, to abutters. Does anybody have any comments on that?
I don't think it's a good idea. I don't think, I understand what you're saying, but you're asking a lot for people, I mean, and it's, when the people buy these pieces of property, it's gonna be their pieces of property to do what they want with it. And if they want more lawn, they don't necessarily want 50 feet full of trees. I'm just saying, I think it's a little unrealistic, just from my point.
Well, they're buying, they're buying a, a lot that is approved, that doesn't exist right now, that is on a town designated by the voters as a scenic road.
But 50 feet seems a bit excessive, I think.
Well, I'm, well, you know, it's up for discussion. I just would like it to be discussed that...
We don't usually have something like that on our, on subdivision, but, okay.
I mean, I could see 15 feet, but 50 feet is almost taking you back to the, the building.
Okay.
Well, this is, I believe it's a 65-foot setback.
65-foot setback from the center line of the road, yeah.
Of the, the road. You say that 50 feet, so that'd be the 50 feet off the edge of the road. And actually, the road, that actually means that they cannot, 50 feet would be inside the build, the, the building.
So that's why I brought this to the, to the table.
That's highly prohibitive.
Okay, so there's this discussion on what, I'm just going from what the applicant said they wanted.
On other sites, we, we have requested that they have, that they not cut trees within 15 feet of the road. That's realistic, but 50 feet...
Okay.
Actually...
Lower it to 20 feet. I'm just going by the experience of, hopefully this board has looked at, and I have in particular Courierville Road, which was a scenic road, and a recent subdivision that was approved, and pretty much 95% of the trees were cut down, and they didn't need to be. So you can ask, but unless we put it on the plan. And my intent here is to allow the building owners to build their homes, move in and say, oh, what do we want to cut down? And that five year could be reduced to two years. I want it just on the table to be discussed.
The, the only problem with that is literally on what is proposed as three dash eight, you're talking, they would, they could not put a septic system in for five years.
The 4,000 square foot reserve area is just showing that there is a location to put it. That doesn't mean they couldn't fit a septic system somewhere, just for clarification.
However, there, there is not much other land here that is outside of the well radius.
It's right about 50 feet.
So basically, you're offering to make a lot there that could not be sold for five years.
So reduce it from 50. What I want here is, is a discussion on the ability of this board to help maintain a scenic road as designated by the town voters as a scenic road. So the new landowner who lives there can decide what they want versus the developer who makes it easier to move equipment in by just cutting everything down and then selling it.
Actually, it's a fairly empty piece of property at the moment.
I went by there today. It's, it's fairly well wooded. It looks like a scenic road currently in that area.
There's been some transition over the years, because when we first started this project on all of these lots, there was a timber harvest there.
Right.
And it was wooded, completely wooded, and they did a timber harvest. And at that point in time, it was a real shock to the community. And there was a lot of discussion about, oh, how it's gonna be all opened up and developed, and it's gonna be awful to see all the homes built out there. Well, since that time, all the trees and saplings have grown up. And so there's these houses that are there in between these two lots. They're 60 to 80 feet back. There's, there's vegetation there, those you can see. I don't know if you can even see your house from the street. No, because it's way back. So there's a lot of the saplings that, that grow up, and it takes a few years to grow. But when you do a timber harvest like that, that's what happens. It, it establishes the sunlight, and the seedlings are able to grow then. And in a few years, they grow up to a point where it's really well-developed. And so with these lots here, they're back equal to or further back, as far as the houses further, equal to or further back than the existing homes that are there now, so...
Don't take my comments wrong. I'm a tree farmer. I cut trees. I do commercial timber harvests all the time. I know what cutting trees does. I have no problem with that. What I'm looking for here is the ability of the new homeowners who move in here to actually say, yes, I live on a scenic street versus where the developer who builds the houses whacks everything down. And yes, trees will grow back. But I would rather give the landowner who's moving in there in the new home the decision. Because once, whether it's five years, whether it's two years, whether it's a year. What I'm talking about is get it through the development phase so that, because a scenic street does not keep the private landowner. They can do whatever they want. Try to get that transition so they could actually move in to see what they want to cut down. But I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
I, I think I would be a lot more concerned if you were talking about a, a hundred-house development, not a two-house subdivision. If you're talking about, you know, a really large tract of land that, that you're gonna be developing. With the two houses, I don't see it being a...
Well, also, are the Mads planning on self-developing or selling the house lots?
I don't believe I could answer that question. In the past, I mean, there's been easements along town right-ofways for drainage purposes when it was required. But I've very seldom, I don't think I've ever come across an easement, even a temporary easement, for maintaining trees along the frontage of a piece of property. And it is a restriction that I don't think I've heard of. And if that was something that the town planning board wanted, I would think that you would have it in your regulations, which you don't. So if that's something that you really want in the future for any subdivisions, that's something you certainly could talk about and put it in your regulations so we could plan for it in the future.
I was just going by what you said, that the intent of the applicant was.
Yeah. Previously, the subdivisions that happened on this site, those modern meadows, I seem to recall, and Mr. Pomacado, did you build your own house, or was it a pre-built?
I was a maple builder, I didn't know, but I was a maple builder. I was the first to move in.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I knew you were one of the earliest.
Yes, I was the first.
Okay. When he came in earlier, he was, the intent was to sell off individual lots, in which case Sandy buys a lot to build her own house lawn. She already decides how far back she, you know, as long as she meets the setback, what she wants to do with the trees on her front yard. What you're doing is you're being, that any restriction on the, the front, they can't cut trees on town property. But that's a very narrow strip along Heath Street.
I'm just trying to put in writing, I know, and you even said so, that, that the board has asked developers not to cut more trees than necessary. That only goes so far, and it doesn't go far at all, so...
Sandy?
I appreciate Michael's attempt at saving trees, because we do have limited, now it seems like all our scenic roads are being developed, so there's a number of people that want to keep them how they are. So I'm interested in different options that we could use to keep those trees. But Jennifer seems to think that, you know, we don't have any teeth to try to keep any.
In this case, I agree with Mr. Quintel, that that should be a regulation. Then it will have teeth, because then it will go through a public hearing process. You know, 15 feet, 20 feet, 50 feet, those are, you would have a tough time justifying that, even though you have a scenic road ordinance. You would have a tough time justifying it if it were to be challenged. I don't know that it would be challenged, but...
Because I know what happens, like we, the town saves the trees in whatever feet we have. The builder clear cuts the rest of it. Now you have this silly little row of trees that people say, why'd you even keep them? Because now they're like, look stupid, but it's the only thing we really can do without, you know, because we can't tell the homeowner not to cut their trees on their side. Which would be nice if we could, you know, kind of encourage people to leave one more buffer on the...
Well, yeah, it's, I mean, it's one thing to encourage people to, to leave the trees, because Lord knows I'm, people know I'm a tree hugger. However, and I know the kind of things that you're talking about. However, I've looked at some of the developers in town that people might say, gee, they only left, you know, five or six trees out front. It's a, you know, a thin line of trees. But that may have been all that was capable of being left behind. Why don't you start talking about ground disturbance and what have you? I went over to one of the recent developments, and I was not thrilled, but I could understand, having grown up in, in town, that, okay, yeah, this is old growth, that you're not, you're not gonna leave anything up that has wind damage. You know, but by the time you finish weeding things out, you end up with that skinny little line of trees along the road. Otherwise, you know, you have, you're trying to put things in around trees, and it really doesn't realistically work. And some people like lawn, but I don't. I actually don't have lawn in my house.
My attempt is not to restrict homeowners in the future. It's to carry it through the short development phase where things tend to be cleared out just to make it easier for access for multiple vehicles. And that's the only...
See, that, that's the thing, is the developments that I've seen, even that recent one that you mentioned, you notice, everything is going in and out one driveway. There are, there are still some trees there. May not be, you know, it's not 50 feet of trees, but there are still trees, and everybody is going onto each lot through a single driveway. There's not multiple, you know, breaks that they're going in. So they are trying to be as conservative as possible on, um, use of the land now. I don't know if Roger's looking something up.
I'm, I'm reading about scenic roads. I'm reading about scenic roads.
Okay.
Has that been a designated scenic road by the townspeople of Newton?
Well, you also have to realize, that was done, I believe, in 1972.
But if they don't want it, they should rescind it.
I don't honestly think that most people, other than the people that live on it, even think about it.
Yeah, that's my point, the people who live on it.
I think probably, like you said, when it got voted in too, they thought you couldn't cut a single tree. They didn't realize that it was the town's portion of the trees that really, you know, they were saving, kind of. The homeowner still could do whatever they want.
And then the utilities come along and...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and then the utility comes along, and you end up with those charming trees that have branches only on one side.
I would, I would suggest that maybe we save the 50-foot buffer no-cut for five-year discussion for another time to maybe add it to the ordinance rather than...
That was a little extreme to create discussion.
Rather than spending more time on this right now.
That's fine.
So do we vote, no one seconded anyway?
No, it wasn't really.
There was no second, so... As there's no second, we will move along.
Okay.
So we're, any other board comments regarding the two lot subdivision?
Yes. I just want to remind the board that on the other lots that were here, we required a $5,000 road bond during construction.
I very good at that on my list of conditions.
Right, and I would say that since Heath is a scenic roadway, Mr. Quintel has shown where the proposed driveway should go. And I was wondering if, if they had to change it because of trees or whatever, would they need to come back to the planning board for approval to move those driveways?
No.
One of my conditions is that they meet with the Conservation Commission regarding driveway placement. Okay, are there any abutter comments? We'll start on the left gentleman. Dennis, if you'd move...
Yep. Again, Jim Summers, 41 Heath Street. Comment was actually about the trees. With Heath, with Heath Street, we, pretty much every home, as you're driving down, has a good 10 to 15 feet of trees on both sides, and the trees even kind of go over the road and overlap. And what I know me personally, I wouldn't want... And what I know me personally, I wouldn't want Heath Street to look anything like Chase Road where it looks like you cleared it out for a paper company and you just opened it wide open where there's no trees at all. So I know that's personally my opinion because Chase Road looks like just a bunch of tree stumps out there, and you can see every house for a good quarter mile. So that's my opinion.
What was your name again, sorry?
Jim Summers.
Jim Summers, okay. Other comments?
I'm Christine Summers. I'm actually at 41 Heath Street as well. I agree about the trees. I don't know if it was something that our builders did on their own, but there is a good portion of 10 to maybe 15 feet of trees in front of the homes. I actually like it. I think it gives us all privacy from a sense. You drive down the road, you do see the trees, and it does feel cozy. You feel like you kind of set back a little bit in the woods, hopefully what remain in the back as well. I would hate to see the fronts all cleared out. I know it would be more consistent with Heath Street, keeping some frontage there. That's my opinion.
Do you want to say something, sir?
I don't know.
Please, please.
And when you...
My question is, in the state of New Hampshire, my name's Harold Caton, by the way.
I'm sorry, what's your last name, sir?
Pardon me?
What's your last name?
Caton, C-A-T-O-N. And if the back lot is going to be used for logging purposes or whatever, there's a lot of hydric soil there, or is a logging road allowed to fill across hydric soil? That's my question.
First of all, it's pure speculation that that would be used as a logging situation. I don't even know where that came from. Right at the moment, it's simply forested land. I don't know if Mr. Pomacado wants to say anything about his intent.
Do you want me to answer that? I can answer that.
Okay.
I think as far as logging is concerned in the future, if he wants to do logging, he has to supply an intent to cut to the town, which identifies the volume of wood that would be taken out. If there's any wetlands there, you can cut trees in the wetlands as long as you don't disturb the surface. You don't pull out the stumps, you don't make any ruts and anything like that. But if you do make ruts, then it's a violation to the Wetlands Bureau, and you'd have to have a permit to restore any disturbance to the surface. And I think Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that's what the regulations are.
Right. Plus, that's for if he's logging to sell, if he's actually logging for his own use as firewood.
Well, I mean, that's going to be a small amount then.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it depends upon the amount.
Make it a tenth to a quarter.
That is...
Yeah, Mr. Pomacado. If you want to... We're a logging town. My... I'm an attorney, so I, you know, no real interest in logging, doing anything like that. I want to live there and keep it as is, keep it, you know, the way that the Mahones had it, I think, now for 50, 80 years, I think he told me. So, yeah, it's probably going to grow in one day and be nice woodland. Probably what's going to happen to it. Yeah, it's never... I'm not going to log it, at least right now. But of course, if it is something that I decide to do years and years from now, I would go through the proper permitting process, and you'd be aware of it, the town would be aware of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pomacado. Any other other comments? Can I have a motion on...
Can I throw out one suggestion? And this is just a... It's a proposal for the landowners to think about in the future, and it's only because here it's, you know, it's on record. It's because there is a landlocked town lot behind there that possibly sometime in the future, they, if they could work with the town, say the Conservation Commission, for possibly a pedestrian right-of-way trail easement to access that.
I believe on the first subdivision that we did, which was more toward 108, I believe we provided an access way to the town parcel.
Mm-hmm.
So it was already an access.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So any further questions? Any further other comments? Sorry, Jennifer.
It was just a comment about the $5,000 surety for the driveway, or for the road.
Right.
When was that $5,000 established? I only say, is there a need to adjust it given that it has been a number of years?
Well, I was just going to say, I wrote it down because that is what, however, it has been, I believe, six years since the last subdivision was happening there. And that's when they came up with the number of 5,000, which was to be... Basically, it's a $5,000 bond that the town holds in case a truck, you know, loses a spring, and this actually happened on Heath Street. A truck broke a spring and dragged down the road and left a rut the entire length to the project. Not this project.
I'm just asking if it should be adjusted for time.
I have a question with that. So if 5,000, it's a bond, what does it cost the applicant for that 5,000 bond?
The applicant hands the town either a passbook with $5,000 on deposit.
Also, it's actually an escrow, not necessarily, not really what I think of as a bond.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it can be. It can be what you think of as a bond.
Yeah.
The applicant have the choice.
There are two different options. There's either a surety, which means that I've got the money in the bank and here's the paperwork, or here's the actual money.
Right. And so that just... And that doesn't come into effect until somebody actually buys one of those lots and is ready to put a house on.
These lots may not be sold for five years or 10 years. There's no...
Only when somebody's ready to do construction does that...
When that was...
That's when the bond has to be provided.
Correct.
When that was done before, how many houses were you talking about?
There were seven lots.
And I... See, I... Yeah. I mean, really, what is the risk of road damage to two houses? I mean, your comments...
I simply wrote it down because it was a condition in the past.
Your comment about a truck... I mean, a truck going anywhere in town could have a thing and damage the road. This isn't like Currierville where, you know, you had a large section of road on an unimproved road surface.
Right. And this, quite honestly, I try to avoid going down Heath Street anymore, though I grew up on it because of its condition. So it would be difficult to say that it added more to the general wear and tear. This $5,000 per would only be, should a truck leave that lot and do something that is specifically damaging to the road.
Well, you have to think that there's... Okay. If somebody's going to build on this lot, somewhere there's a bunch of trees that are going to have to come down. So whatever kind of equipment is needed to do that is going to come down the road. Plus, whatever else has to come down the road for the construction with the equipment to dig the hole for the foundation and the septic and stuff. So there is wear and tear from that kind of equipment.
Right. But the 5,000 doesn't cover wear and tear. It covers...
No, it's damage if... It gets damaged during that construction.
Yeah. They go to unload, you know, a bulldozer, and they forget the blade is down, and they dig a huge patch of the road up. I mean, actually, it'd probably be a benefit to the road at this point, but...
And I'm not sure if it would be fair to the people before on those other lots that we charged them $5,000 bond until their house got built, to not do the same here.
That's the reason I put it on the list.
That's just...
I don't see the need for the interests of the town to tie up these people's money.
Okay, then...
There's also the fact that you could not pull a building permit for a year, for three years, for five years, for 10 years.
Oh, no, no. When you pull the building permit is when you have to post the bond.
But I'm saying that if it's not pulled for 20 years...
Oh, yeah, in which case, $5,000 might not cover anything.
So under that, does that make sense with Rogers?
Okay.
Or is there a way to reassess it at the time of building permit?
The last time we had it in the D...
It has to be on the plan.
Yeah, on the plan and on the D.
It could be the exact number, right?
It has to be number specific.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
Can it be number specific with a condition?
Oh, good Lord, no. So do we want to continue to require the bond?
I don't think this...
Just a straw poll because this is just a condition.
I don't think this project, this subdivision, justifies requiring a road bond.
Okay. Sandy, do you agree with Roger?
Well, in the past, for like a little two-lot subdivision, have we had them provide a bond?
No. We started out because it was a seven lot.
Right, for a big one, right.
And we did it per lot because the intent at the time, and actually, I believe what happened was, the lots were sold individually, and people came in and built their own houses.
Right. And they actually, I think we might have been anticipating that all seven lots could have been built at the same time, but that didn't happen.
Right.
Typically, if someone was coming just for a two-lot subdivision, we wouldn't have them do a road bond.
Correct.
No, but I put it on my list for equity.
Some ways to look at this, I don't really look at this as just a two-lot subdivision. I look at this as a continuation of the original...
Well, yes.
So in that case, to be consistent, I would say we stay with it, with requiring the bond from that perspective.
Sandy, yea or nay?
Yea.
What's the yea or nay?
I'm taking a straw poll because...
I say, put the five, yea.
We're not doing a motion on a condition.
That's my yea, put the five.
Roger's suggesting that we delete it. Sandy's in agreement.
No, I'm going to keep it on.
Oh, you want to keep it on? Okay. Michael?
Keep it on.
Barbara?
Keep it on.
Jim? Okay. So we will keep that on. Any other comments on the two-lot subdivision and any conditions there, too? You want the list?
Do you want the list?
So far, we have to set the bonds, to meet with Conservation regarding driveway placement, to post a bond of $5,000 per lot during construction, to be posted at the time of the building permit. All state and local permits must be...
Did you say five per lot or five total?
$5,000 per lot. That's what we did last time. All state and local permits must be gained, all state and local fees must be paid.
Okay.
Would somebody like to make a motion then?
Hang on, I have one question. Did you get sub... Mr. Quintal, did you get subdivision?
We have not received the state subdivision yet, but that is a condition of state permits out of the state permit. It's typical that we don't get state subdivision approval until after planning boards.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make the motion without the $5,000. At this point, I think I want to vote on it.
Okay. You want to vote on the 5,000?
We can do it either way.
Okay. So remember what my conditions were. They're in the base of the moment. And I have a motion on requiring the applicant or the lot owners to post a $5,000 bond during construction to be posted at the time of the building permit.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that matter? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Mr. Hamill opposed.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So that stays on as a condition.
Mm-hmm.
So you already heard the... So can I now have a motion to approve the two-lot subdivision with the aforementioned conditions?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. By the way, I'm assuming that we will be recording sheet number two?
That's correct. Thank you.
And we'll put the waiver on there also.
I was just going to say, the waivers need to be added to here, plus lot 3-7 as proposed. You need to show the 4,000 square foot.
It's there.
Okay.
It's rectangle, but it's there.
It says 4,000 square foot septic.
Okay. I just, I...
You didn't see the square?
No, no. Where one side follows the top of a line.
It's sort of... It's got an arc to it.
Okay.
I just want to make sure the registrar doesn't kick it back and go...
Where's Waldo?
You don't see it till you see it.
The waiver for the $5,000 on the Neber account wouldn't go on the plan.
No, no, no. The...
The stormwater is already noted.
Right, the stormwater management waiver.
Right.
Thank you.
At this time, I will close the public hearing. And Mr. Quintal, please remember that we need four lodge sheets, one... Actually, I may have one of these in... No, I don't.
You have the final.
Well, we have to modify it anyway.
Right.
But I need a copy for Conservation, I need a copy for the assessor, and a copy for the office.
I have a question. Will you be talking to the assessor before you actually do the final plan about that lot number?
Yes.
All right. And then just when you give us the plan, if that changes, would you just put a little note so we'll know? Okay, thank you.
One question on that, because I know that they were asked to talk with the Conservation Commission. Will we or can we ask for a response or a letter or something, what the Conservation Commission, do you want, is or...
She's on Conservation.
...the location of the driveway where it's...
Right.
We do a site walk, right? We post a site walk probably, and then we take notes at the site walk, the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Can we ask Sandy to relay that information?
Yeah, I would like to.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quintal.
Since we had that as a request, I'd like to know about it.
Item two, Ann Marie Mahoney Kent, conditional use permit, a public hearing, shall we open, which I am doing, on a conditional use permit for an accessory apartment at 21 Maple Avenue listed as MAP 10, block 7, lot 6. I will open the public hearing at this time.
Why don't you wait one second until it goes?
Mr. Pomacado, please speak to your mother for me.
Yes, you will. We have a hearing. Thank you.
Ms. Kent? Yeah, you might want to move over there so you can stand up and...
I'm not a professional.
This is a conditional use permit for an accessory apartment. Ms. Mahoney, if you want to start?
Oh. I don't know what I'm supposed to do. I mean...
Tell us why you're here and what you're asking for.
Oh, all right. Hi, I'm here for...
What you're looking for.
A conditional use permit for my accessory apartment, which unbeknownst to me that I even needed one because it already existed prior to purchasing the home. And when I went to refinance my home, they said, when they did the appraisal, that there was not a permit for it, which is when I first realized that... was not a permit for it, which is when I first realized that I needed one. And also, so I did a little bit of investigation, and the apartment's been there since at least 2005. I have an MLS listing for that. And so, I put into the application, I went by your rules of what you needed, and... Sorry. And here I am, and I hopefully have covered everything that you need. And you have any questions?
Okay. We're not cruel here, so I'm not going to make you, you know, do a presentation like you have. Has Ms. Rowden had...
So, I've gone through the information that was sent. I also pulled up the tax assessor card just for your property, just to honestly compare sketches and dimensions. It currently is illegal, but if you approve this tonight, this will make it a legal accessory apartment. It seems to comply with all of your regulations. My only question is verification that the septic system, which I know you gave the real estate disclosure about what size the septic system is, ensuring that's adequately sized for a five-bedroom home, when it was originally a three-bedroom home.
Right.
The septic system went in in 2003, so it's been used since we've been there over eight years for four to five people, and we haven't even, we've pumped it once.
Simply, if you were building your house brand-new, or if you were coming in and the accessory apartment wasn't there, we would look at you and say, "Okay, your septic system must be scaled to the number of bedrooms in the house."
Which it is. 1,500 gallon tank, we already researched, is more than adequate for a four to five-bedroom home.
1,500 should meet...
The requirements.
The requirements.
However, we just need some sort of verification.
You'll need to be contacting the health officer, and he will tell you what you're going to need to do to figure that out.
So, my suggestion, because I think that they meet all of the requirements with that one sort of question, I think it should be fine, but that I would recommend, once you accept jurisdiction, a condition of any approval be verification of the septic system's capacity through the building department, which would really be the health officer in this case. That's my... And I know that that's another step for you, and I get...
I need to get this application and this permit because I need to replace my furnace. So, I need that now. So, are you telling me that I have to wait even longer?
No, no, no. You will, Thursday, you will, because I'll be the one typing it, you'll have a notice of conditional approval. That you can take to your bank, and hopefully that satisfies them.
Hopefully? I mean, why didn't anyone contact me about this? Because I have done due diligence for six weeks. I put this application in, I talked to you. Nobody has called me. We looked up 1,500 gallons. It's been used since 2003 at least, and there's been no problems with it. So, I need to get legal counsel, I think.
When they came in and pumped it all out, the guy checked it all out, plus I had to go and do that, and he said it was working fine and there was no problems, no issues.
Because, like I said, the town knew this was an illegal in-law apartment since at least 2003, because the assessor has put that down. So, I really don't understand what you're doing this.
So, one of the suggestions I made to you when you did speak with me was that you go to the building department and get a copy of your septic plan. I don't know if you were able to do that.
Building department?
The town building department.
I went to, and I talked to them, and he said that only the state would allow me to have that. So, I did talk, I did talk to Jim about that.
No.
Jim, I asked you where the septic plan would be kept. You said I had to go to the state.
I said you had to go to the health officer, and it, either the health officer or the state.
You told me the state, Jim. I would have called the health officer if you had not said the state. Okay, so what do we need to do from here? Because my furnace is going to die.
I can look at this up to see if we have a copy of the plan.
Yeah.
Okay? Other than that, you're still going to need to talk to the health officer, because that's one of the conditions of an accessory apartment, is that the septic system shall be adequate for both units, and the health inspector is the person who makes that assessment. However it is, he needs to do that.
Can I get this all in writing?
It's on the accessory apartment...
No, the reasons why you don't think a 1,500 gallon tank...
We don't, we...
Been there for 15 years and...
We can't make that determination. That's why the septic system shall be adequate as per New Hampshire Water Supply and Pollution Control. That's why we refer you to the health inspector, because we don't know that.
I also have the bold idea to talk to the health inspector, because I've been waiting over four weeks for this, and my, like I told you, my furnace is ready to die, and I just asked why nobody told me to do that. You told me, and I asked Jim, and I was on the alert, and I have to go to the state for that. So, why didn't anyone tell me I need to talk to this health inspector, which I would have gotten this done?
The building department, where the health officer works, usually for many properties, does have a septic permit from the state on file. In cases where they do not, then the verification goes to the state, which is why I suggested you go to the building department to see if they had something on file, rather than needing to go to the state as a first step.
I was told that the town didn't have it, and I'm telling you, I haven't wholly told you that.
Well, if the town doesn't have it, then you would have to go to the state, or you go to the health inspector who...
But I wasn't looking. So, okay, what do I have to do?
So, this evening, what the planning board can do, if they think your application is complete, they can accept jurisdiction over it. They could make an approval, conditional upon verification that your septic system is adequate, to which you would speak to the health officer, who would make that determination, and if there's a need to go to the state to get that information, he would send you to the state.
So, I'm calling up on the schedule tomorrow?
I honestly don't know what his hours are, perhaps, Barbara?
I can check on that in the morning. I'll check, I can check on that. I go in at 8:00. I'll check on that for you. And I will call you and let you know if we have it and what it says. Okay?
And then, you know what I have to do from there?
Yes.
We're just trying to get this confirmed, because it's on its last page.
Right.
You know, I'm sorry to upset, but...
It's okay.
I mean, why didn't the town sue this when they moved the apartment? And why am I in unfulfilled diligence here at that?
So, I'm going to reiterate that I do think the application is complete, but I do have that one recommendation for any condition of approval.
And I will tell you that the building inspector did go and inspect, and he said everything was fine. The egresses were fine, there were no problems.
Yeah, that, I just got this tonight, but I was still trying to...
Can we slow down before we discuss anything? Can we take jurisdiction?
So moved.
Can I have a motion to take jurisdiction?
Mike just did it.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. White, thank you. Now, Roger, you can...
Do we have a vote on jurisdiction?
Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sandra, are you... Okay.
The first drawing is the apartment, and the second drawing is the house. Where is the apartment in relation to the house?
It's in the basement. It's in the basement.
It's in the basement. Oh, okay.
You want to do pictures?
Well, I guess, you've got a lot of pictures, and I'm still trying to figure out all of this.
Roger, this is the tax assessor's card that might help.
Oh, yeah, that probably would help a lot.
Is there access to the up end?
Yes.
Yep, there's pictures of the stairs in there.
The back of the house.
See the stairs, Sandra?
This is the form of the house.
That goes up high.
Okay.
And although it's not marked real well, if you look at this right here, over here between number 13 and 16, is the exit to the outside on the back of the house.
So, this is now the basement? You come down to the basement?
Yes.
And you've got two bedrooms?
You go downstairs, and you go in here.
Oh, okay.
This is your kitchen area and your bathroom. This is the two bedrooms. And technically, it's really not even two bedrooms, because one doesn't have a closet.
Okay. And...
And as far as the egress into the home and outside of the home...
Yeah.
I've worked with the building inspector, and he's taken care of that.
So, Barbara just mentioned, this is the door to the back outside.
Yeah, that is right. It's, you can see it by the kitchen.
Oh, I was going to say, you have a nice picture of the back glass. So, that there...
That's right here.
That's correct.
And then, this is the other egress.
Okay.
Which I have pictures of my phone on of that, if you want to see it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Fine. I was just trying to get it all. Right. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I unfortunately didn't have a chance to do my homework.
The packet didn't get to him, so he only saw it for the first time when we got here tonight.
Okay, big driveway, okay.
Did everybody else get their packets on time? Yours got emailed, so I know it arrived. Sandy, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm good.
Michael? For Michael or Mike? Okay, doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Some people, it better be Michael.
No, I don't.
Okay. Roger?
Yeah, I'm okay now. Took me a little while to get off the steam, but...
So, having taken jurisdiction, can we have a motion to conditionally approve the condition? That's a bizarre sentence. Conditionally approve the conditional use permit for the lot at MAP 10, Block 7, Lot 6, with the one condition being a letter from the health officer or the state regarding the septic system adequacy?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Anything further on conditions? I don't see any. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, Thursday afternoon, I will type up the notice of decision on this.
So, when can we get rid of the condition? Because I can't still take it by noon until it's not, then I have my septic issue coming.
You may be able to take the notice of condition to your financial institute, and they may be willing to accept that. The notice, the final decision won't be until we have confirmation on your...
When's the health officer in?
I can call him.
I don't have his...
Actually... I said she could do that tomorrow, right?
If you're able to go to the health officer tomorrow, if he's available, and they can verify your septic system is adequate for your number of bedrooms, and write a short little letter that says that, you could bring that to the planning board office, and then you have met that one condition, and you can have your final approval. Does that make sense?
Not really, but yes.
By the way, can I have a motion for the chair to sign final approval as soon as that document is received?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'm just making sure that, rather than having to come back and the chair will have the ability to sign a final decision without having to come back to the board. Okay. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And I will look up tomorrow that plan to see if we have a plan on file.
Thank you.
Okay. It's on the application, is it not?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come in. Okay, moving along. Okay, we have acceptance of minutes from 6:11, 2019.
Move to acceptance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
See, I got to read those on my website. I got to read those on the website.
I'm sorry that the agenda is not, I have to get with Gail to get the password and what have you, so that when she's out, I can access the website. Okay, there are two manifests. One is a NEPR manifest in the amount of $3,655, of which $155 is going to Sumner Kalman regarding the SEC Realty Trust questions on the easement review for 141 South Main Street. And the other is, and I know people remember this from the last meeting, $3,500 of it is money that the board voted at the last meeting to release to Father and Son Construction. However, we were going to have the selectmen release it, and the selectmen don't release NEPR funds. We do through the manifest. So, can I have a motion to pay?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All those in...
Can I add, it's not really on this one, but because I forgot to bring it up, it's about NEPR funds, so I think it's... I know on the last meeting, which I missed, we released $3,500 of the NEPR funds to the Purryville. Does the, now that we have one, does the code enforcement officer, like, sign off on that? Or how do we know that the conditions have been met before those funds are released?
Often, it's the town engineer.
Right.
It's often town engineer for, like, road construction. Sometimes it could be the road agent.
So, we are, like, when we vote on that, like, do we know the motion that you just made, do we know that the town engineer has said yes?
Yeah.
Remember, there's a difference between money that we hold in bond and money in the NEPR account. The NEPR account is to cover expenses through the planning board stage. If, and we have for developers in town, required that they maintain something for onsite inspections and what have you, after the plan has been recorded, we actually, that has to be a separate motion and a separate account. This is money that was deposited, that is on deposit for a plan that has been recorded. Once the plan has been recorded, we release. However, in this one, because there was a road bond element, he volunteered to leave something in in case the town engineer was needed to go out and look at it again.
Okay, so the NEPR is basically what it's costing the town to do the...
Do the paperwork.
Paperwork, okay. And then, the road bond is separate, okay.
Right.
So, when we release a road bond, then, the town engineer and the road agent...
Right.
And we know that.
And we will get a letter from the town engineer saying that he's looked at everything, and it's fine.
And we don't release that. That goes to the selectmen, because all bonds are held in the name of the town in the jurisdiction of the selectmen. We just set them and collect them.
Okay.
And in those cases, after we're sure that the road is done, then we make the recommendation to the selectmen to do the release.
Right. And there's all sorts of different ways, you know, some like these that, tonight, those would be simply released. However, if it's a road that requires town acceptance, we retain the money for, we retain a percentage of the money for two years after acceptance, in case something needs to be fixed.
Right, okay.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That's unanimous. We have a operation, operating expense manifest in the amount of $74.70. It didn't print right. And that is to Windstream for our telephone.
For what?
For the telephone.
Move to paper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Okay, item C, correspondence you found at your place this evening. Hey, packet, and I can't find it.
Staff, this. You wanna, you wanna look at mine?
I have it on here, I thought.
I just gave it to you tonight.
Yep.
There it is, okay.
I'll let Ms. White explain this.
Okay. I had a call today from Mr. Bonnie and the letter is sort of self-explanatory. They're in the process of getting a plan to us because I guess they never did give us a plan that showed the tanks after they had gotten approval for that a couple of years ago. So the fire department is asking them for, to do that plan, which they're in the process of doing. So I guess what he's asking right now is could they have a conditional okay so that, I guess to the, to the fire department that it's in process and, in other words, they would like to move this along and get their occupancy through the fire department. I believe that that's what they're asking for.
I, I thought of this, they're, they don't have to come before the board. What it is is Barbara and I met with them for over an hour a couple of weeks ago. The ZBA gave variances that do not show on any, but the ZBA did not require a new plan showing those variances. So we have a plan of record here that includes none of the variances, though we have record of the variances. But the plan at the registry is our, the plan that we have. Yeah.
So they want to make a new plan with the variances and we wouldn't-
Showing, showing the variances.
Yeah, it's just a-
And that will satisfy the fire chief because he looked at the plan that we have and gone, and went, oh, there's something there, it's not here.
Right. So they're in the process of getting a new plan submitted.
Right.
So whenever a non-residential site changes, even if it requires a variance, if it expands more tanks, bigger building, whatever, they need either a new site plan or an amended site plan.
Right, and that's what he's doing. They're in the process of-
Yeah, so, that's why, I read the letter, I don't understand what he's asking us to do.
I, I don't think there's anything that we can do other than myself as a selectman calling the fire chief and saying, can you issue them a conditional occupancy permit because they're in process?
I think that's what he's requesting.
But basically, after they got zoning approval.
Yeah.
Shouldn't they have then come to us with a new site plan?
Yes.
And, and, and basically where we're at is they, they need to submit a new site plan.
Right, it was, it was Hafner's, however, what they need to submit to us is not a full application because what they did was they, they circumvented the planning board because what they were proposing was not in they needed the variance in order to do. It's a-
Yeah, but once they got the variance, then they needed to come back to the planning board to, to get approval of the site plan.
Nobody told, and it's not the present owners, it's the previous owners. Once again, the, the present owners are doing their best to bring things into compliance. We can't require them to submit, we can require them to submit a new plan. We can't require them to put in an application.
Right.
Because the, the application was to the ZBA.
Right.
I think they fall, well, let's, I'd like to hear from Jennifer.
So currently, if, if they needed an amended or a new site plan under whatever they're wanting to change, new tanks, they are technically out of violation with your site plan regulations by having not done that. That's a code enforcement action, which is under the purview of the select board.
Exactly.
So it's, the planning board for this has no-
Jurisdiction.
Has no jurisdiction, should not, honestly, I would not advise you even comment to the fire chief. That should really be a select board decision.
That's why I just said, I as, I can bring this to my, the selectmen and recommend that the fire, you know, the selectmen talk to the fire chief, not as a planning board employee.
And if part of the, I'm gonna say, even if code enforcement action were to be taken against them, which it doesn't sound like that's sort of the, the route that may, it may go, if it were to happen, part of the remediation of that violation could be you have to go to the planning board and submit a site plan application. They're already doing that, so maybe that's not the right route to go, but-
But that, that's what I'm saying, it seems like the right moves are in process. But there's nothing for us to do until, until the new site plan hits our, 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 our office.
I honestly don't think the new site plan, put it this way, I, just like the previous people, Hafner's is trying to bring into compliance something that has been out of compliance for a long time.
That's, that's wonderful.
The planning board, because they receive building permits and what have you to do this work and they received a ZBA variance that authorized, we can't look at them and go, yeah, we don't, we don't like what you did on that site plan, we're gonna reopen it and go through the whole thing. I believe that that, we would be in major litigation that we would lose.
So they got a variance for the tanks.
Right, uh, seven or eight years ago.
So they've gotten that legal relief, so you have no ability as a planning board, let's say they come with an application to say, nope, can't have the tanks. They've already gotten, that, that can exist. But the moment they have to legally are supposed to come in for an amended site plan, there's a new structure, that use expanded.
Right, if they're gonna add something new, like if this next tank-
That opens up the entire site plan for your review. You can't say, no, you can't have the tanks, they've already gotten that legal relief.
Right.
But everything else, you need to now comply with our new stormwater regulations. You need to do X, Y, and Z, have a vegetative buffer and, and everything gets opened up.
And that is why people that have illegal apartments and what have you will not bring them into compliance.
Well, that's all well and good, but, and I understand, so it goes to the selectmen, code enforcement officer now, not the selectmen as a facilitator. The selectmen as a code enforcement because they are out of compliance.
And, and that's under, it's the select board's determination of how they want to, if they want to pursue it as a code enforcement action, you could do that. You know, in this case, maybe that's not the best way to go because they're already voluntarily doing it. But there's nothing for the planning board to say to the fire chief, like, yeah, that's okay, you have no ability to do that right now.
Yeah.
So just to clarify in my mind, the selectmen, so they're not trying to do a code enforcement issue, well, they could, but that's not necessary. They're doing what? Encouraging the applicant to-
Come into compliance.
Come into compliance with a new-
Site plan application.
Site plan application.
Right.
So we should, if it goes that route, we should be seeing this in the future.
Yes, I mean commenting to the select board that-
If the selectmen choose to, yeah.
Well, according to the letter, they're already preparing a new site plan.
Right.
Yes.
But they can prepare the new, they can prepare the new plan and record it themselves in accordance with the variance.
That's an illegal plan, we're not signed-
We're, we're, they won't have a signature on it.
Wouldn't be an illegal plan.
No, they, they cannot record a site plan with the variances as saying it has met all town approvals because the planning board is who would need to sign it, not the ZBA. They could record the notice of decision from the ZBA.
I was just gonna say, either that or we can tell them they don't need to do this, they just need to record the decisions from the ZBA.
No, they need to, they, they need to do a site plan.
Right, they need to, so it can show existing conditions.
Well, see, I think that too, like this was sent to Barbara as the building department, right? Not as the planning board.
Right.
So although you have two hats, this is the planning, this is the building department. So to answer this letter, I think you have to say that at this step in the game, planning board has really nothing to do with it.
Right, it's, it's the selectmen.
It's the selectmen.
Yeah.
Right. Right, because the planning board at this time has really nothing to do with it.
As far as occupancy permits and the building department and the fire chief should be referring it to the planning board. Well, the planning board, because you need planning board approval to do this expanded use. You've already gotten the variance. We know it's a code enforcement issue, not action, and that is under the select board.
Right.
Right.
So there's a lot more steps that have to go, they have to go through.
The best thing is for them to get their amended site plan in here as quickly as possible so that you can review it.
Right.
Hopefully, they get a, an approval or a conditional approval and then a final approval and then occupancy permits and the fire chief can be satisfied and everybody goes on their merry way.
So refresh my, this is just a procedural thing. If this board, you know, site plan turns it down or, you know, where they have to approve it, but they have to go to the ZBA for a variance. As soon as the ZBA grants the variance, they have to come back here.
They should have come back here.
They should have come back here.
Site plan application because it's a new-
Yeah, I mean, it's-
It's a change, right, they should have come back.
If it's a, simply a use change within the building of, I'm, outside of this example.
Yeah.
They may not ever need to come back to the planning board if it's just a use change that requires a variance. But if it's a structural, on the ground, building expansion, parking expansion, then they have to come to the planning board.
Right, and evidently, when they went to the zoning board at that point in time, they never made coming back to the planning board one of the conditions.
And the ZBA has a standard, whenever there's a change on the footprint of what an aerial photo would look like, whenever there's a change like that on a non-residential site, they should come back here or at least ask first.
Exactly, and these people are trying to bring things into compliance.
Right.
Because now they want to do something else too.
No, but, actually, no.
No, they don't, just want to continue.
They, they just, they had, similar to the previous applicant here this evening, they have a plan that does not show a, a concrete pad with a tank on top of it.
Right. Because I know we had discussed this a few weeks, months, I don't know, time flies by, to go down there and look because they were storing a bunch of tanks out in the front that-
Right, and that's, that's different.
Yeah.
But that was the last time I remember talking about this site.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, when, when that came up and code enforcement looked at the plan, they went, oh, there's a tank down there that's not showing on the plan. So called Hafner's, said the, okay, in our records, and this is probably five, six years ago, ZBA issued a variance to allow for that tank to be, to be put in.
Well, we approved some new tanks-
Yes.
On that site.
In the back.
So not, not all that long ago, I mean, in, in my, in my tenure.
No, 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 those were different. This is a small tank up near the building, which I believe is used to heat the building.
So, so the plan that we approved when they put in the other tanks-
Right.
Don't have this one on it?
Doesn't show this, this, this one on.
They went to the ZBA and asked for permission for this tank, and I think that, I don't think this is for heating. I think that this tank is, tank so that they can fill up their trucks, you know, like you gas up your car. That's what that tank is for, okay? So the ZBA gave them permission for that.
But never said-
Plus, okay, you can have that here because it's over an aquifer. They welded everything together.
But the, the thing is, is that if they come back to the planning board and we look at them and go, okay, yes, you now have to do stormwater regulate, you know, the new stormwater regulations, though I don't think they fit into-
They, they probably fall under, if it's just that, the small winner.
It's just a little pad with a tank.
It, you know, a butters are not going, you know, we'll have to send out a butter notices, but no. You can't come in and say, I want them to tear down the building because we don't have that power.
Right.
I, and either, I would encourage them to at least give me a call or send me an email before they apply just so we make sure that we cover as much, as many bases before they even submit as possible.
Okay.
They'll probably take everybody's-
They came in, Barbara and I discussed what was on the plan and what wasn't on the plan.
Yeah, looking at, looking at the, the stuff from the ZBA and said, oh, not there.
Yeah.
Can I, I don't want to step on any toes here over at the ZBA, but is there, could we maybe have a correspondence or something to remind them or encourage them when something like this that definitely is a site plan?
No, things, things like that no longer are a problem because we share our administrative assistance.
Okay.
Realistically, that does just functionally cut down on stuff, whether it's Gail or somebody else.
Right.
It really does.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because one hand knows what the other one's doing.
Yeah.
And you do have to be, there, there are certain toes you definitely don't want to step on.
Yes, that's why, I should have waited till a non-public session.
That's okay.
That's perfectly okay.
On the courts, are we, is there any more correspondence?
That's, I was gonna ask.
Okay. Well, I have a, I brought this up, I'm not sure if, I was gonna give it to Gail or something, I just, I got this, it's a synopsis of a report on, and I think it falls under, well, planning because that's part of what we do, we're supposed to be planning, but it just shows, it's a report on how conserved land is a moneymaker for towns. And it just goes into like-
Who, who is it from?
From a, well, the sources are a few different ones, but it's put on, it's put out, this one particularly is, is high-stated, the regional conservation organization dedicated, dedicated to conserving New England landscape. And this is a basic cost of community services synopsis. And some of the things it just shows, like even in New Hampshire, residential development always costs more than it pays in taxes, whereas conserved land and commercial industrial pays more taxes than it takes in services. But I just thought that might be interesting.
It would have been nice if 25 years ago, people in Newton would like that.
You got inventory, you got inventory what you have now, because they're like-
There are more local examples on UNH cooperative extension over the past 20 years, it's done a variety of communities around here.
I just liked that because it was succinct.
Yeah.
Brief. Like they say, protecting land, it's like planting a tree, what's the best day to plant a tree? Yesterday, what's the second best day?
Day before. Today.
Okay, any-
I just have a quick logistics question for you, because I know we're gonna do the, because the stormwater regulations didn't get posted for public hearing on the 9th, I would A, suggest that you make a motion to, that we're gonna have them on the 23rd, just so it's in the minutes.
Just pro forma, yeah.
The other thing is that on July 9th, would there be an issue with me not being here? I'm already booked for two meetings that night and I wouldn't be able to get here until about 8, 8:15.
Do we even have anything?
I don't think you have anything on the agenda other than the stormwater regulations.
After what we discussed this evening, I don't believe-
Okay.
I don't think, I don't know, we may even be canceling that meeting, I don't know if there's nothing coming on July 9th.
Quite honestly.
I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to bring that up. I, I, yeah, I mean, if an application comes in or a question, I obviously-
Actually, it's too, if an application comes in, it's too late to propose anything for. So can I have a motion to officially-
Reschedule the, the public hearing?
The public hearing for the 25th, I believe it is.
23rd.
23rd.
23rd, thank you.
So moved.
Yes.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hallelujah, because I sent out the legal notice to the papers two days ago. Sorry, yesterday.
Okay.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion, oh, sorry.
You finished the correspondence?
Yeah.
I'm up?
Oh, sure, you can be up.
For this?
Sure.
Okay.
I was just gonna call for the motion.
No, that's okay. I'm gonna make a motion to go into non-public session under 91 colon, 91A colon 3, IIA investigation. And do I have a second?
Second.
I need to do a roll call vote to go into non-public. Sandra?
Yes, aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Me, aye. Okay, so we're going to end you the- Okay, so we're going to enter the non-public session at...
8:50.
8:50.
And do you want me to stay?
Thank you. Just for a minute. Okay.
We need to move into the conference room.
Right, we're going to have to move into the conference room.